Debbie Swanson, John. Am I missing? Am I missing? Jimmy and John are not here yet. So when they come on, Lisa, maybe you can see what time they come on and just let, you know, for the minutes to let them know. So we have enough to call the meeting work session to order anyway. And the first item on the agenda is a discussion on updated liquor license application. And that was Stan.
Sorry, I don't, you, sorry. All right. I'll be quick with this and then answer any questions anybody has. Since I've been on the board and since I've been a part of the Liquor Commission, we've had the same application process, the same application form. And it's just a little bit tired, needed some updating. Needed some things added to it to make it a little bit fuller for our review process. So in meeting with Jimmy Trustee Wilson, who's on the commission, Attorney Winters, Mike Radzik, and at the time Larry Doe was still a part of that Liquor Commission. And so we made the decision as a group to do some research and try to update our policy, make it a little bit more informative for us as we review these and bring them to the board as a whole. So I went out and got the policies or application processes from a number of communities around Southeast Michigan, including Ann Arbor, Pittsfield, the city of Ypsilanti, Canton Township, Van Buren, Livonia, and a couple of others. And so I took those and over the course of the last 45 to 60 days, tried to put together something that is before you tonight that we can look at, that I think will make our process a little bit better. Give us more information that we haven't been able to acquire as easily in the past. It lays out a process for the applicant so they know what they're following. And again, it just asks a lot more questions than we have in the past. And at the end of the document, it talks about our fees that we currently charge. And I put in a different number that I would like, and I think most of the members of the Liquor Commission and our group that met agreed that we needed to increase those application fees, those license fees. And so I did that on the last page of the document, which is page 14. And that's really a quick synopsis of what this is all about. It's just about, again, making our application and our process fuller, more informative, so we can do a better job of vetting applicants and making sure that whomever is applying for a liquor license and wishes to bring a business here, that it's in the best interest of the township and our residents. So I guess I can answer questions would probably be easier than me just going on and talking about it.
Do people have questions, comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Trustee Wilson.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that this was a very comprehensive overview and a great document that a treasurer just put together and it was time for us to come up into more modern times as regarding to our liquor licensing. So I think everything was done well and will be more on par with other municipalities.
Okay, and you're on the Liquor Committee, so Debbie and I know you're also on the Liquor Committee, right, Deb? And have you had the opportunity to review the changes as presented?
I did. I had a few questions, but they were kind of basic questions. There was a place where it talked about how many days? I want to say it was like 30 days and I wondered like if that's calendar days or if that's business days or if we would, if we could spell that out and be more specific about the number of days. I've got the document. I'm trying to find where that was.
Debbie, I think it's on page two if under the requirements and procedures. And I should have, and thank you for noticing that, I should have spelled that out better. The intent was 30 business days.
Okay.
They wouldn't have the ability to access us on the weekends.
I thought so, but I thought we'd want to be specific about that. And then I had a question of, I mean, I want to also say thank you, trustee or treasurer Eldridge, for taking the time in the committee that worked on this for it's so hard for me not to call people by like their names. So I'm getting used to them, but I appreciate the work that was done to formalize this and for putting it in a format where we can look at it and we could give feedback. So thank you to everybody who did that. But there was a part where it listed, like when they turn it in, there's a non-refundable fee. Does that mean if they turn it in and they are, they don't get the liquor license? They do not get that money back at all? That that's just the cost of applying?
Yeah, and we can certainly negotiate and talk about that number. And it's only because of the amount of time that would get expended by staff. And when I say staff, I don't mean the three of us that would be on the Liquor Committee, but by the Office of Community Standards, the building inspectors who may have to go out and look at the facility, the amount of time that would be put into the background investigation that generally Mike Radzik does. So it's just trying to account for all of that time and those costs that are associated with it. I think when people look at this expanded application, what it's going to do is maybe ensure that we get applicants who are truly ready to take on this kind of a responsibility of having a liquor license. And I think generally they're going to have their business plan really in great shape and we'll see fewer applicants turned down. But I'm certainly open to changing that number, but that's just kind of what we came up with. And looking at those other municipalities, they generally were using 50% of what the license fee was.
I'm kind of.
I do know that if we have been the, if we eventually move forward with it, it'll have to go through a review certainly by the legal staff, but we would also have to update ordinance as well to make sure that the ordinance is conducive with the new policy or the new application.
Gloria. Okay, I have a question, Stan. When a system business sells their business to another company, let's say like Big Boy or some other business, does that license goes with the new owner or do they have to come back to apply at the township? Or do they have to pay a fee? What is the process? Is it grandfathered in when they purchase that building?
No, I think once, and Doug, you may have to give me a hand here or Mike if you're on. But I think once an applicant gets a liquor license, they take ownership of it and it's simply a transfer that's handled at the state level, I think above us. I don't think we have any say or much say, you know, I don't think we have a whole lot of participation in that like we would at the initial onset of the issuance of an application. But Doug may know, I'm sure he knows a lot more about it than I do.
Okay.
First of all, good evening. Happy New Year to everybody. This has been a continuing challenge for the board ever since I've been the attorney in how to handle these applications for liquor licenses because once they are approved, they become a very valuable asset of the person who receives a liquor license. And I think everything that we feared came about during the Big Boy scenario, because at that point in time, the Big Boy owner went through the process, assured us that he was going to add new employees to the payroll, he was going to expend $100,000 of innovations and went through it, had a proven track record in the city of Ypsilanti. And once the township board, as the township board approved the the application, went to the state and the state approved it themselves, within 30 days, that license went into escrow. It has never been used by the owner. And in fact, I probably shared some of my letters of frustration with even the new board members over how this whole process went about because I felt we were obviously somewhat bamboozled by what happened in that situation. And so the owner now has a liquor license that could, can be sold anywhere in the county. So at that point in time, that's what led to a lot of issues as to what was the best option now. If the owner leases out the property to a new occupant, which is supposed to be what's happening at Big Boy, they have an agreement to transfer that license or sell that license for 15 times greater than what he paid for. And that person keep, that money stays with the licensee. The township board will have to ultimately approve the transfer of that license from the owner to the new licensee or the new lessy. But the point I'm making right now is that once we grant the approval of these liquor licenses, they truly become a property right of the entity that receives the liquor license. And because you only have X number of licenses that are allocated to the township every decade based upon population every time they do the 10-year census. I think the goal of this ordinance is try to ensure that we are being fair, being equitable, and also being judicious in how you are granting these licenses because the intent is to have economic development become a strong component behind the granting of the license. And so can some, can sometime, can people still do something that may not be on the up and up? I suppose they can, but I think the intent of this license is to do a deeper dive into the financials and into the background, into the pro forma in regards to what are they showing is going to occur for how will their sales be increased? What types of additional employment will be gained by this? And so again, none of us have a crystal ball, but I think the intent behind the revisions is to help us maybe sharpen our laser and be more laser focused on the applicant. Because answer your question Gloria directly, once the license is issued by the LCC, township has no claim on that license and you can't, and you cannot give it back. And so if we could, that would have happened. I think that we did a study one time that showed how many liquor licenses had been transferred out of the township over the last 20 years. And it was a quite, quite a staggering number. Mike, it may not be on the call right now, but I think as many as maybe 15 or more licenses have been transferred out of the township to other parts of the county, mainly the city of Ann Arbor, Dexter. So once they reach their quota over there, the licenses become more valuable. This changed somewhat now because of the COVID-19, but the day will come and that will get back to restaurants being open again, hopefully. But in the meantime, we're trying to shore up our our ordinances and maybe do a, maybe a more folk, more laser-like, business-like look at what's going on here because sometimes the information is not always what it appears to be.
Thank you.
Any other, I got it.
Yeah, I have a question.
Oh, there you are, Mr. Newman. I'm sorry. I'm looking for your name. You're right in front of me. Yes, sir.
Yes. Hi Doug. Happy holidays. Happy holidays to everyone. Just, just a question. So if I understand it correctly, I could get a license in Ypsilanti Township and sell it to someone who belongs to Detroit?
Not Detroit, someone in Washington County.
In Washington County. Okay. All right.
So that's where we, that's where we've lost a lot of our licenses because this whole township, they were, you know, they experienced a big boom over there too on Ann Arbor, Celine Road, and they've become a very attractive tool for development. Whittaker Road, if the time does come and it will, with the hotels coming, if you are going to get a major chain restaurant to sit down, they're going to have to have a liquor license as part of that, as part of that business model. And so we have to be somewhat mindful that we've been trying for a good while to attract some very much, maybe mid-level, high-level like sit-down restaurants. And that's why we were very, very skeptical, even I'm not saying that the Big Boy is not a high level. I'm just saying the Big Boy normally is, you know, going to Big Boy for liquor. And that's why, that's why we're very skeptical at the very beginning. But again, we went through and there were a number of promises that were made where sometimes when things are too good to be true, maybe they are. But in this one, the township, they proceeded in good faith. And that's why I felt very strongly that when a person gets a license in 30 days, puts it in escrow with no intent whatsoever, ever using it, that's, that's not right. It does take away a license from someone who does have an entrepreneurial spirit. But it has happened to us. We've been, we've been, we've been, I don't want to say burned, but we've been impacted by the intra-county transfer of these licenses. And we are going into a new decade now. I don't know if we'll get an increase. I think we will on our quota. I'm not sure when that will be decided. But these have to be used as a tool, in my opinion, in my opinion, for economic development and to be fair about how we do it and have a process that can be open and transparent and be fair to all the applicants who are coming along. So that's the goal and intent.
Cora.
Um, I just had a like kind of procedural question maybe for you, Doug. But if we move forward with the new application and also treasure Eldridge, I was going to do the same thing, Debbie, where Treasurer Eldridge and I, like he looked over my few questions and edits and answered all those for me. So thank you for your work on that. But if we are to move forward with the application process, like what comes first? Amending our ordinance or going ahead with the application? Like do the, does the timing of either of those matter to one another?
I think we can do both simultaneously. We can open on the agenda, amending the ordinances. And once they are approved and a matter of record, then we can also have as part of that agenda item D, approval of the application process policy. So one would be by ordinance, one would be by a policy resolution.
Okay, so with an ordinance, like we would, we could do the first hearing and then at that time start initiating the new application? Or like, is there a reason that we couldn't use our new application, you know, tomorrow?
I think we should have the ordinance, make sure our ordinance is actually in place so that there is no discrepancy between the two.
Okay.
And
And you mean in place as in we've had two readings of the ordinance and it's confirmed by the board? Okay, thank you.
And we've waited this many years to get it maybe, maybe updated. So I think the more prudent way would be to do the ordinance officially and then adopt the application. And I'm not aware of any pending applications, but I think the sooner we move, the better we should do it. And maybe the question might be posed to either yourself or supervisor stumble as to when, as to when the township might be notified of when we get our allocation for licenses based upon the new census. I don't know when that will come about, but I think we should try and find that out. So we can also know how many we have, because that's the first question many people ask when they look at coming to the township is, do you have any, how many available liquor licenses do you have? And I'm not sure how many we have right now, but yeah, I think we have four or five right now.
Doug, they have a state website that lists all that information, but I don't, with the census, I'm not sure how that changes and we can find out about that. I know Debbie, you have your, Heather, are you done? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add that there are actually two potential businesses looking to fill out applications that I'm aware of. So I just wanted to share that as well.
Debbie? Trustee Swanson?
Yep, so I wanted to follow up back with that. So there's two things. I wanted to follow up back with the idea of like someone being able to get one in Ypsie Township and then take it. So now I'm kind of understanding, like as I see things happen as far as economic development in other places, like it, like that fee to apply, if that was the intent of somebody seems like it's well worth it because, you know what I mean? So I'm seeing now a little bit more. I need to learn a little bit more. But I'm wondering like, so really the limit isn't really a limit if you can take one from another community is what I'm hearing. Attorney, what?
It's, when I say limit is that we only have so many we can allocate. And once, but if someone gets one from our allocation, they can actually then sell it. At one time they were selling for 80, $90,000. And so, but that counts against our quota as a township, so we don't get any more. Now granted, somebody in Ypsie Township could buy a license, say from Ann Arbor or Pittsfield. But so far, that seems to be a one-way path. We may have had one person in recent years that purchased a liquor license. It may have been the sushi bar, the sushi restaurant. But more often than not, the licenses are not coming into Ypsie Township. They're leaving Ypsie Township and so our quota, once it's maxed out, the township board does not have that tool for, to give out as economic development incentive. And so it would require somebody else to go on the open market and buy a license and have a transfer back into the township. That's why I think that, and Brenda's right, the, on the website, the number that we currently have available, I was just kind of curious as to when that might be updated via the census that was conducted here in 2020. So, but it is important.
We can issue.
The maximum.
Be in our, in our area, because you could have more if yours is transferred to somewhere else. That seems like it's set up to put communities against each other, but that's probably not something we can solve here. So I wanted to make sure I understood that. And then the other question I'm wondering is because it's such an extensive form and there's a lot of information that's going to be collected from people that could be considered proprietary or, you know, when you're starting a business, you don't want to hand over your whole business plan to people. What happens like if we decline it? Like is there a process? Does the agreement that it just gets shredded? Like what happens with all the information? Because we've asked for fingerprints, we've asked for a lot of information that you would either, do we return it? Do we just agree that will destroy it? Like what do we do with that? Because there's a lot of confidential information that I would think people would want to know what's going to happen to it. So how do we handle that?
Well, normally I think that there is a lot of financial proprietary information, including maybe even tax, tax return type issues. The township would have a right to agree not to release that information through a FOIA. I believe that it should be returned back to the applicant because I don't think we should have confidential information via social security numbers, text ID numbers, bank account numbers. In fact, the board has an agenda item tonight on that mission control agreement. Where I was a little bit concerned about us providing routing numbers to third, to a third parties. So all the information that is given to us in a financial proprietary, you said the word. I wish to go back to the applicant and should be marked as such and handled as such. Because I have seen that occur in business model plans and people, you know, very right, have a very much of a right to make sure that the information does not get disseminated onto the internet. And so that has to be handled in a very sensible manner.
And is there a way for us, because I don't know FOIA, I mean, I know what FOIA is, but is there a way for us to protect what someone turns in to us from a FOIA in this kind of a situation where it would contain information that they would, we wouldn't want to share and they probably wouldn't want shared?
There is an exception under FOIA for proprietary information being submitted. With township could exempt that from a FOIA request. But I think that the information should also be, once the committee has made a recommendation, the information should be returned back to the applicant, the financial information.
Heather? Courtroom.
I was just going to add that because the applications are, I think that's a great, excellent point, Debbie, about just making sure it's safe and secure. And because our office handles the applications, we could just, you know, like make just enough copies for the Liquor Committee to review and like, you know, number the packets. So they're given confidentially and then you guys must submit them to, back to our office after your hearing's over. And then we would either mail them back or put them in the shredder.
Mr. Newman?
Do we have the website? Quick question. Yeah, do we have the website that we can look and see where the liquor licenses are per township or per city or?
Dan, I just, I went to each municipality and just started scrolling through their websites. Some were easier to find than others, but you can eventually find most of them. I have copies here in the office if anybody would like to see the ones I looked at.
Okay.
Trustee Newman, were you talking about other licenses that are?
Yeah, the liquor license, like I know we haven't been, because of the census, we haven't been reissued.
Yeah, there's a state site for that and I think Mike Radzik can provide that information.
Okay, all right, thanks.
If you go to the state of Michigan, Michigan.gov and just go to the Liquor Control Commission section, there is a page for local, they call it the Local Governmental Unit quota search. And while we were speaking, I looked it up and Ypsilanti Township is allocated 36 on-premise licenses, 30 have been issued. One is currently what they call allocated. And I believe that's the one that the Township Board approved for what used to be Big Boy on Washington. The state has, has not yet given final approval because the building has not been renovated. So that is in, that's been approved, but the state considers it to be allocated and not yet finalized, which leaves us with a total of five available to be granted by the Township Board going forward.
Within a 10-year period, let's say if it doesn't change?
No, that, that's in perpetuity until they make adjustments for any changes in the census. The way it works is under the state guidelines, every jurisdiction gets one of these for every 1,500 population. And so Ypsilanti Township currently is awarded 36 based on the most recent census population. Once the 2020 census is completed, I'm assuming they'll make an adjustment if we gain enough population to justify another 1,500 people and one more license. Um, I'm assuming they'll make an adjustment if we gain enough population to justify another fifteen hundred people and one more license.
Thank you, Michael. Trustee Wilson.
Yeah, Mike, how many have, uh, I think you've explained this to the liquor commission, but for the rest of the board, how many? Have left the township and how many do we actually still have here?
I did an analysis a couple of years ago for the board and if memory serves, of the thirty that the board has approved. Fifteen of them have left Ipsalany Township, they've been sold and taken. The majority of them went to the city of Ann Arbor. I believe one went to Dexter, one went to the city of Ipsalany and one went to Pittsfield. Now, the flip side of that coin is I'm aware of one that was brought to Ipsalany Township. And that was um. The uh, if I'm pronouncing it right, Aki, AKA Sushi Bar. In the Pink Creek Shopping Center, right on Whittaker Road, they brought one from somewhere else. And now, um, we have another business pending, I think, I don't think they formally applied, but uh, there's a new business at Washington on Gulfside that. Purchased one from Pittsfield Township and they intend to transfer that to Ipsalany Township. I don't think they formally applied for that though, yet. But that would come to the township board for approval as well. So lost fifteen, made gained one, maybe two, um, it's very lopsided. Which to Stan's point, this is even more reason why the township board should have a vested interest in. Having a very tight and very well thought out process. For how you make your decisions on granting these liquor licenses going forward, because there's not many left.
Madam Chair. Can't find my hand raised button. Good.
Yes.
Okay, uh, it just goes back to um, for trustee Swanson. In all honesty, I would have um, made the application fee higher. I thought this was a compromise because we as board members talked about a higher fee. Because we have so few and the unfortunate reality is. For too long. Perspective developers have seen our low cost and they simply are willing to pay that thousand dollars that we currently have. And turn around and use it uh, and resell it and the return on their investment is exponentially greater than anything they could do in a bank. That's the reality and as Mike said, nothing or very little is coming back to us, it's all going out. So, um, I just thought that the fee that I listed on the last page was. I thought a level we could get to is a compromise rather than going too high and and going too quickly.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, and just one final uh, postscript is that. I don't think I can emphasize enough that. During the last even ten years, when we looked at trying to redevelop. Or day night, just redevelop, but even to develop and even enhance uh, economic base for the township. The Whittaker Road corridor continues to be the one area in which the larger. A chain potential restaurants have been looking at. And if we're down to um, the five right now, it's not that we have to say the all five should go over here. It just means that with the hotels that have already come here with the planned development. Uh, for the YMCA and with other uh, perhaps uh, enhanced development, you now have an additional. The uh, La Fontaine. Out of families now here, that as it continues to create more and more traffic coming this way. We have to be in a position to sort of look uh, look ahead and see that if we're ever going to have. Uh, an outback style restaurant or something like that, we have to have a liquor license. Availability and that's just the reality. And uh, I just, I think that now that we're down to to five and we might pick up a few more. I do think we've uh, we qualify from a population standpoint to get maybe three or four more, not sure how many. But you know, that they just, they they just cannot just be. I think granted to those who may not have the most uh. Might be well intentioned, but it may not be a good location or a good business plan. Uh, for that to go, years ago, township board got criticized because there was a owner. Of the what they call Blue Wolf Grill over here on Washington off, that was in a former Taco Bell. And um, they won the liquor license and they came here to township board and they made their case. They were not going to leave, ever going to leave, going to do this, going to do that and uh. I looked at their lease, lease was not one that was even renewable and it was one that was very um. You know, and you wanted to help, township board wanted to help the small entrepreneur, but it was not a good business decision. And within a less than a year or two afterwards, uh, they decided that catering might be better for them than. Uh, being in a restaurant because the seating capacity was only about. Fourteen or fifteen. And so the reality is right now is that, you know, you do have a lot of people that really have good intentions. And they may not have uh, you know, any intent to be deceptive, but then some do. But many don't, it's just that the plan is just not going to be one that's going to be in the township's best interest. If you're going to use that as a tool for for economic redevelopment and that's all that I'm emphasizing right now because we are down to five. And so I was just cautioning the board to use those judiciously, especially as you go through. Economic redevelopment of the hotels, YMCA and the whole quarter, we're looking at things further on down the. Whittaker Road as well, uh, so there's a lot of potential for redevelopment here, but those licenses are going to be a key component.
Trustee Eldridge.
Uh, I just had, I wanted to follow up on a point I asked about earlier, I guess it would be Doug. Although we're going to move it forward hopefully and and tie it into the new ordinance. Could we begin using this application fee right now or this application form, not the fee, but the form? Uh, so that people have an idea of what is going to be required of them or should we hold off? Because we do have the one or two people that are making inquiries now.
Well. Our next board meeting is February second, if we want to put a resolution forward, maybe to adopt a form right now. Let me look into that component because I thought we were going to do it simultaneously. So I'll give you the a better answer or you know, a better thought out answer. Between now and February second.
Excellent.
I have a couple of comments, maybe um. So I, first of all, I know that our application was old and it was causing confusion. And we want to make sure people are treated equally, we have a good process, so I support that a hundred percent. And I do know also, we learned that in one of the applicant. And it was a Woodstone, the building already had one liquor license. And the person who was applying is a very good food establishment, applied for um, a liquor license. But in their um, lease agreement, it says that that license will go be sold back to. You know, the owner of the Woodstone, so then they would have two, so. There's a lot of loopholes that other people are familiar with and we're not, I think this would help with that as well. And I'm not sure Doug, if we should address if, or Stan, if that should be addressed here, I don't, I don't know. Now. Are liquor license the same as tavern license, beer and wine, are there different categories? Or is there, we have six licenses since it's all alcohol, is it considered the same?
My understanding is is you have um, yeah, we, in this case, we have five licenses left. And it could be any number of those things you just mentioned, um, which are all different, but they all come out of the same pool of five, would that be correct, Mike?
Yes, any on-premise license that is considered by the state to be a quota license. Would come out of that same bucket of thirty-six that were allotted. So that includes class C, it includes some of the hotel licenses, not all of them. It includes the tavern license, which allows you to sell beer and wine, but not spirits. And a couple of other ones, if you'd like, the LCC does have some publications giving this type of advice for local governments. I'd be happy to download all of that and send it to the entire board so you can see. Which licenses are included in this quota bucket and which ones are not.
So when we gave a new wine license to Stony Creek, that Stony Creek Winery, I can't remember the name of it. You're saying we gave them a liquor license?
I don't believe that type of license is one of the quota licenses, correct?
Okay, okay, I just wanted to, and then I also think that, I'm not sure though, and we would want to be more sure. The micro brewery license, I think they're separate, are they?
I believe those are separate as well, yes.
Okay, so we we need to. Just get a better understanding of what is allowed under that, the allotment, right?
Uh, yes, and I think it would be a great idea when we um, craft the language for the ordinance amendment. If we actually list the types of state licenses that people would be required to come to the township board for approval. Whether it's a quota license or not, so that there's no ambiguity. For instance, a micro brewer is a manufacturing license, does not require board approval, however. If they want to have a tasting room to provide samples, that's an on-premise service. And that does require township board approval, but it's not, it doesn't come out of our quota.
Right.
So it gets a little complicated and I think it would behoove us to spell this all out so that everyone is crystal clear.
And although it's complicated and maybe we don't want to charge the same amount for those. And I don't know, I'm not saying we do, but I'm just saying I don't know, for the micro breweries and the wine smaller. Although they have to go through the same process of providing the information, their business plan and whatnot to the liquor committee to make sure they're financially. You know, viable in order to sustain the small, smaller business. Rather than the outbacks or the the larger businesses, Aubries, I remember when Aubries came here and. It's a huge success and even the sushi board bar. It was a mistake to give Leo's Coney Island one when we did because he he paid a thousand and he sold it for fifty thousand, which I mean. Because he's a good business person, but that wasn't the intent of, and that's what we're trying to prevent, I think, and what Doug was talking about. And Stan was talking about. Looking at the fees, Stan, they look high to me, but I know you've compared them to other municipalities as well and. I'm not sure about. If you pay twenty-five hundred dollars upfront. And you have to have a sealed uh, architect and plans and all. Like I don't know how many people are going to take a chance on that, but. I'm not saying they're not, I'm just saying I don't know, it, will that be a deterrent, uh, Doug, Stan, I I don't know.
The people that aren't ready, as Doug mentioned earlier, um, although well-intentioned. This tries to. Eliminate some of that because it's still going to cost our staff time. I I just think that at some point we need to increase the fee. To make sure that we have the legitimate people who, and legitimate is not the right word, but the ones who can make it. Successful. There are a lot of people that may want to do this, but we got to make sure that. We're bringing in the people who can self-sustain themselves and be here for the long term.
Madam Chair.
I think the process, the way we've been doing it is clearly is not worth. Need to try something different.
Oh, no, no, Stan, no, I agree a hundred percent, I'm just like.
Well, even with the fees though, I I think the fees have not been to the point where. You know, it it, raising the fee is going to bring the more serious, well-prepared developer or or prospective owner to the table, I think.
I just didn't know if they should be the same for every request, but.
Yeah.
Because we have all these new ones that don't count against a quota. But I do know we need to have the information, a lot of the information, but should the cost be the same since? And and you know, that's, I'm not saying it shouldn't be, I'm I'm just asking that question is.
Right.
Because I know people have applied in the past and they said, well, they couldn't come up with a thousand dollars. And you know, we explained to them that that's nothing compared to other communities to do it. But the twenty-five hundred non-refundable application fee for liquor license. And I understand that, I just didn't know if it should be the same for others that. Just a more of a comment than anything.
Right.
Supervisor, for what it's worth, I totally agree with your line of thinking, the class C license is the gold. The gold ring, if you will, that is an extraordinarily valuable asset and once they have it, we can't take it back. And they're free to use it as a business asset as they see fit. However, a tasting room permit for a micro brewer or a winery cannot be sold and transferred somewhere else as an asset. And the fees should probably be less. And that's, that's for the wisdom of the board to consider, but I would urge you to consider some kind of a. Fluctuating or flexible fee schedule based upon what it is.
Yes, Mike, Mr. Win, oh, Mr. Win.
Yeah, I think the intent behind bringing it to the board and talking with liquor committee was to get this kind of dialogue. And feedback going uh, and recognizing there might be a stepping stone type of a graduated increase in some things, but. We've been somewhat, I don't want to say hampered, but with the COVID not being able to have an, our committee meetings, in fact, I don't think we've had one since. The end of the summertime last year, but I think all the comments are very. Valid and we can maybe take those back and maybe re-re kind of rework some of the. Uh, items, including the fee schedule and everything, after the board, they said their feedback this evening. I would, I would also point now, I'm not really sure, the township's own golf course. Maybe one of those that are part of that quarter that remains right now. And as you probably have seen from the recent letters on the golf course, classy liquor license. There's a lot that goes into that even for the township in regards to making sure we have. The appropriate level of insurance, uh, the appropriate training for employees who are going to be. Uh, entrusted to actually serve alcohol to uh, golf course patrons. And so I think that this, we've been kind of somewhat stymied over the last year, I think because of the the COVID to some extent, but I think that. Stan uh, has done a great job in trying to encapsulate all of the thoughts that we were trying to to uh, move forward with. And we can probably fine tune this document uh, by taking into account everything you're saying, what's uh, Stan and Jimmy and. Debbie and everybody wants to get together and try and uh, to do that, so we have something back for the board here real quick, quickly.
Yeah, that's why I like work sessions, the opportunity to discuss it. Clerk room.
Yeah, I just um, on, I know on page five, Stan, you added the term of the lease with details. Um, and I guess maybe there's a question for Doug if we're allowed to ask for this, but could we just request the whole lease? You know, so that we're able to see things like. I remember the last one, the supervisor Stumble was mentioning that like, if you leave, then your liquor license stays here and that's not. That's not right of the person leasing the building, so I don't know if we could request that and then just also maybe. I don't know what everyone else thinks, but whenever the requests come to my office, it's kind of like, I don't know. Can a brewery go here? Can we have liquor here and, or like, can we manufacture here? So I wonder if maybe just adding on the application, like if it's in the proper zoning or like. You know, just if there's a space to say like, this is this location that I'm referencing in this application is zoned. R1 per the most current um, zoning map at the township. I don't know if that's helpful to other people, but it's really helpful for me that, just because I'm new at understanding all of that. And I think maybe applicants might feel the same way.
Heather, it is um, one of the things the applicant has to provide. If you go and look at page two of this, item six talks to the zoning and says the applicant must provide. A copy of the zoning permit or clearance from our building director that the proposed location is in compliance. a copy of the zoning permit or clearance from our building director that the proposed location is in compliance with our zoning ordinance.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's okay.
And I would also add that on page, uh, five, we do require them to give us a copy of the lease agreement, so I think we've been getting copies of the lease agreement, um, for years in regards to, uh, any application, so we always require, uh, sometimes we might have them redact out how much they're paying, uh, some of the financial information, and going back to Trustee Swanson's comments, there are certain things that could probably be redacted that might not really be of pertinent information from our standpoint, but we're always gonna get a copy of the lease agreement.
I guess I was just saying that, like, if I was an applicant filling out this form, and it said term of lease with details of the lease, I would just, if I were filling it out, I would say, you know, one-year term, you know, payment due on the thirtieth or something, like, I don't know if it's explicit enough for like, simple thinkers to be like, oh, I need to give them the copy of the lease.
Well, page five, I'm looking at page five right now, not number twelve.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at too.
Just copy the lease agreement.
It says, oh, I guess it says an actual copy, if you do not own the building, okay.
Clark, where are you?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome, um, Trustee Swanson?
I wasn't sure if I heard the final decision on whether we were gonna let people start looking at this, because the, the one area that I still have questions about is the, um, the fee, so first I was leaning more towards wow, that seemed like a lot, and now after listening tonight, I'm thinking, I wanna do a little more um, learning about how maybe other communities similar to ours that have them leaving. If there's anybody who's done anything to be thinking about, that we could learn from, if, because there's gotta be other communities who have the same situation we do where they're, where they're leaving more than they're coming, and so I, I, I don't want us, I don't want someone to think that fee structure is the fee structure, if we were to allow people to look at what the, what they would have to do for it, so did we make a decision on whether we were gonna allow people to say, hey, this is what you might be asked to do, or are we gonna wait until the final approval before we shared it with people?
I think Doug was gonna research it, did I hear you say that, Doug?
I thought we were going to go back and maybe revisit some of the suggestions that board made this evening. Everything would be kind of maybe, uh, do a second cut at some of these things, and, uh, Ypsilanti Township probably is the one example where we've had so many given to us because of the population being the second largest municipality, that there may be others out there that have lost liquor licenses, but probably not as many as we have. It probably could be a, a scaled or step up in regards to the fees, so the ones that are Class C versus the ones that are, you know, uh, non-quota type licenses, but, um, again, that's why I think Stan put that draft on that document this evening, it was, it's a draft document, so it's a work in progress, but I think, beginning the first meeting of January, it's a great, great discussion, and uh, I would like to work on that with committee members and with Stan, um, to maybe, uh, take those comments to heart, come back with a uh, maybe a more of a, you know, a final form.
Uh, Mr. Winters, I think Debbie and Heather were referring to, I guess, at least two people have submitted um, requests for licenses, I'm not sure which ones, but should we, how should they, how should the clerk's office proceed on that?
Well, I, I wasn't clear, maybe Heather can explain, have they actually filled it out?
I think they just made inquiries.
Because I didn't understand that they'd actually filled out an application, I just thought they had made inquiries.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just had, I had to go to the bathroom, uh, forgive me, but there are two, one is, one that Mike's aware of is the Folling warehouse, and, um, Mike, I remember there was something different about that one, I can't remember off the top of my head right now, but they haven't made, filled out the application, and then the other gentleman um, has just made inquiries, but he wants to do something different, it's again, like, kind of like, it's gonna be a brewery, but because they're not open, they wanna just like, sell from the location right now. So again, I just, I'm, I'm not sure what avenue to send them down.
Well, I don't know how we can inspect anything or visit any sites now, can we, like, due to COVID, I mean, that's probably why the, the state is so far behind.
Doug, would we be within our rights just to not open the applications up to any new ones right now until we finalize this?
Well, I think the main goal, the main, the main problem was, was prompted by the Class C liquor licenses. That was really the one that was driving the conversation, the other ones, uh,
Tavern, as I was saying.
What might happen, what could happen, inquiries, I mean, we get those, you know, all year long and everything, I guess, I guess right now, I would, uh, to get a Class C liquor license application before we can, we can finalize this one, I would ask that they, they hold off in filing it until we get the new form. But again, I don't think we have any, any Class C liquor licenses that are pending right now. Uh, I think the last one that was filed was the one by the township. So I think we can get this, I think we can, I think we can get this form finalized and get it back to the board in about the next two weeks.
Okay, great.
If I may, the one that, uh, uh, Heather was referring to, the Folling business at Washington Gulfside, that is Class C, however, that's the one that, uh, that business owner purchased one from Pittsfield Township's quota. He bought the one that belonged to TGI Fridays at A and R Bar Celine and ninety-four, uh, that went out of business. So he'll be transferring that to the township, and that does require township board approval i- in the form of a liquor license. Um, but that would not come out of the township's quota, so I don't see a problem with allowing that one to move forward, and then the micro brewer would also not be a quota license. The only other one I've heard of, there was an inquiry recently from the Hampton Inn Hotel about a, a liquor license, but I don't think that would be a Class C, I think that would be one of the hotel categories that may or may not come out of our quota, so, and I don't think they've actually applied either, so.
Very well, Trustee Newman?
I was just wondering, are all the fees for liquor licenses the same? Say, for instance, Washtenaw County and Wayne County, are they regulated or are they different?
Go ahead, Supervisor, sorry.
At the state level, they're the same, but each community sets different, um, costs for applications and approvals of liquor license and other licenses.
So for instance, if, we talk about Ypsilanti Township being a thousand dollars, if I applied for the same license in, say, Detroit, would that fee be a thousand dollars as well?
It'd be different, each community sets their own.
Okay. I got, okay.
Yeah, like, I think the cities is ten thousand, is that right, Stan, ten thousand?
Uh, city of Ypsilanti, no, I think there's a lower than that, I don't remember the exact amount, I don't have the papers with me.
Okay. All right.
So each community is different.
Yeah, some are, are, John, some are less than a thousand, some are more than ten thousand. Each, yeah.
I thought we had the lowest in the state, but I must be wrong.
Pretty close.
Thank you, Mr. Newman, um, Mr. Winters?
Yes, um, I keep in mind too that going back to Trustee Newman's question about, uh, uh, different communities, some communities actually, I mean, the city might require this, but some communities actually require you to own the building, as opposed to a lease, and so I, I hate, I hate to think that, uh, this is more one of those challenges where one size truly does not fit all, because one community's needs are unique, the downtown city might be four square miles in total population, and so they're more compressed into a downtown area. A township is obviously much more scattered out, but I, I think the intent is right now is that we're down to probably, if Mike says we're down to five, I don't know if that includes the, the city, I mean, the township's license that was just issued this past December. But that, that is one that's not counted on this website yet. I'm sorry?
It is, isn't it, Michael? Yeah.
I believe it is, but I would have to double check.
It just got issued on December first, so I got, so, uh, they're, they're getting, they're getting fewer and fewer, and that's the only point I make, but, um, that's why I think the, uh, the track record and ownership, I think the city is always taking a position, they want someone to be truly vested in the business, uh, like many communities do in order to get these licenses, because they do become a valuable asset, and this, you know, and, and the idea that you could pay a thousand dollars in the past, even five thousand, and sell it for a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, that, it just leaves a bad taste in my mouth in regards to what we're doing.
Oh, yeah.
And that's what happened to us at least fifteen occasions.
Well, I, I for one appreciate all the work that Stan and the committee has put into it, because it, we need to tighten it up once we realize what could be, what, what was happening, actually, so I think it's a good idea to protect our community and our economic growth and ability for people to, you know, expand their businesses, so I support it. And this was a great conversation, is there any more questions or information that you would like to see at the next meeting? Stan, are you okay with the conversation?
Wonderful, yeah, yeah, and I'll get ahold of Doug and, and Debbie and Mike and, and Jimmy, and we'll get a meeting and we'll get it ironed out and hopefully have it ready by February third.
Okay, all right, so that sounds good, well, then we'll go on, Heather, are we good? Excellent, um, then we're gonna go on to the regular agenda. We have the minutes of the work session and regular meeting. I just had a few correction, suggestions.
Thank you, Supervisor.
And any questions or comments on that? Statements and checks, do we have any questions or comments? Treasurers' report? Attorneys' report?
I'll wait.
Okay, um, the, uh, resolution for approving refunding contract between the YCUA and Ypsilanti Township. The information's in your packet, I noticed that, um, Tom Colasar, bonding, um, representative for Yucca and actually the township, as well as Dwayne Harrington, Herring from, uh, YCUA, he is the financial officer. Did someone want to give an overview, Tom?
Sure, I'd be happy to, um, good evening, so, what you have before you is a approval of a refunding contract um, for consideration, and the idea is, um, YCUA issued bonds originally in two thousand two to finance some sanitary sewer system improvements for the township. Back in two thousand eleven, we refunded, YCUA refunded those bonds with the approval of the township pursuant to a refunding contract to lower the interest rate. Those bonds are now subject to redemption again, so there's an opportunity to go back out into the market and again reduce the debt service on what's left of those bonds. So those bonds mature in twenty twenty-six, so the idea would be, um, to issue refunding bonds to replace the bonds that mature in twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-six, reduce the interest rate on them and achieve debt service savings, um, for the township uh, by issuing those bonds. So preliminary numbers show a savings of approximately, and again, this is before we actually get it in the market in price, but using estimates for what the market would be, that have been prepared by the, uh, townships and YCUA's financial advisor, PFM Financial Advisors. They're expecting the savings of about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, that's net present value savings um, for the remainder of the debt service. So again, there's only five years left on that debt service, and that savings includes any cost associated with actually issuing bonds. So that's already factored into that savings figure. Um, again, we wouldn't actually know what the savings is until we actually got into the market, but if you project what interest rates look like now, um, that's kind of the level of savings that we would be looking at. That's approximately six percent savings, net present value savings, just as a gauge. When we start looking at refunding bonds for communities, we typically start if there's the two percent, three percent levels of savings. I would say anything more than that makes it more interesting, um, and more savings to the township and YCUA. So the idea is to put the township and YCUA in a position to be able to refund those bonds by adopting the refunding contract. That basically reaffirms the township's obligation to repay debt service on the bonds through, you know, its operations at YCUA. Um, it does not, so if the market moves away from us, so if, so the idea would be if the refunding contract is approved, we would then go to YCUA's board to adopt the bond resolution, and also they would approve the refunding contract. Then we would get the, the deal ready for the market, we would prepare a prospectus, basically called an official statement, that would be used to market the bonds. And all those costs that would be incurred up to that date, if the market moves away from us, nope, we don't charge for those costs up to that time period, so, um, only if the deal's executed, um, sold and closed, would any of the legal and financial advisory fees be paid. Um, only once the deal is executed, so again, if the market goes away, the deal just sits on the back burner and nothing happens. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on the process, um, associated with this, if there's any questions on the contract or or the, the refunding bonds themselves, happy to answer those.
What, Tom, is, what is the amount owed on the three million dollar, was it a three million dollar original bond?
No, so, um, I don't have the two, that's a great question, I don't have the two thousand two original bonds, and we would have had, um, there would have been lots of, um, principal that would have matured over time from two thousand two until twenty twenty-one, so the deal size would have been significantly higher than, than what's left on the deal right now. So our, our principal, the principal maturities left are about six hundred thousand dollars a year. And they're at four percent, and so the idea would be to, you know, put lower interest rate bonds in, all starters projecting three percent, hopefully that would be lower once we actually get it in the market. Um, and that's what's gonna produce your savings, right, is reducing the interest rate. We would not be stretching the maturity beyond the original maturity, so the idea would be you just put lower interest rate bonds in their place, and reduce, and reduce the debt service. But it would be, it is a three mil, there is about three million dollars outstanding on those bonds. So to the extent you wanted to pay those off, it's about three million dollars to do so, which would be a significant amount of money to actually pay them off, instead of refinancing them and still, and reducing the debt service.
And if there's not a two percentage point difference in the refinancing, then we wouldn't do it.
If there isn't the level of savings, right, so if there isn't at least a two percent savings or, or more, we wouldn't, we wouldn't execute the bond purchases, we wouldn't, yeah, we wouldn't sell the bonds.
Okay, um, Mr. Trustee Newman?
I have a couple of questions, uh, first one is, uh, the, I'm not very familiar with the refunding policy as it, as it refers to bonds, the difference between refunding and refinancing, uh, can you explain that, uh, before I go on, or?
There, there really isn't much of a difference, where you kind of use those terminology interchangeable, because what we're doing is, we're actually taking out those, so what, most of these deals when we get structured, again, this was a, the original deal was done in two thousand two, matured in two thousand twenty-six, so about a twenty-five year deal. Most transactions, most bond issues have a provision that after ten years, you can refinance or refund the, the bonds without any premium, so that's what we took advantage of in two thousand eleven. Those two thousand eleven bonds that we put in place had that same kind of ten-year call protection that we call that, where you can't refund them until ten years, we're coming up to that ten years now, so, we have the opportunity to do You can't refund them until ten years. We're coming up to that ten years now. So we have the opportunity to do so again. So I don't think there's really a distinction between refunding and refinancing. What we're really trying to do is just reduce the debt service on those existing bonds.
And okay. And is there a risk involved with the refunding process?
No, because again, you don't have to execute it, right? So unless there's savings there, a a level of savings that that you're comfortable with, there's no obligation to actually incur or actually issue the refunding bonds. So and again, since no one's charging for that cost, then the only time we might have a cost that would not be is to the extent we got the bonds rated by a rating agency prior to their sale, that is a cost that you still have to pay the rating agency because they've issued a rating with respect to the bonds. And I know that I believe that that PFM was looking at, you know, kind of maintaining the double A rating, which is a very strong rating. So that would be the only potential risk, so to speak, but that's a that's like a ten thousand dollar cost versus a much more significant cost that you would incur if the full deal was executed.
Okay. All right. I I guess I I it's it's still all pretty new to me. So I'm still trying to wrap my head around it. As far as the, when you say call, that it I guess another question would do we have to incur more debt to pay it off? I I guess.
That's a great question. And when I use the term call, forgive me, that's kind of a term of art. What we're doing is we are sending a notice out to the existing bondholder saying we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna pay you off on this particular date because we're putting in, we're taking advantage of the market, and we're going to put in lower interest rate bonds. Because our new bondholders are most likely going to be completely different bondholders than the two thousand eleven bondholders.
Right.
So when I say call, what it means is you're you're calling them for redemption. So you're redeeming those prior bonds, and we're sending out a notice to them. So that's that's really the the terminology when we talk about call. And actually, there was another question that I don't remember exactly what it was.
So it it it's a kind of a piggyback on that one. So if they don't want it, what would be their advantage of getting it redeemed sooner before it matures?
So actually, they the bondholders don't really have an advantage for that. I mean, you know, their goal when they bought was to probably hold them until maturity. They wanted to, you know, hold those bonds at that interest rate to maturity, whether it was for investment purposes or other reasons. But fundamentally, the the way that the transactions are structured is that they bought them knowing that they could get refunded or refinanced, taken out at at that particular time. So they priced that into the what they were comfortable accepting for an interest rate and a yield on the bonds at the time.
Okay.
So they really don't have any recourse to YCUA or the township. They can't say, hey, I want to hold these bonds. There's just, there's no ability to do so. The township had and YCUA have the ability under the existing documents to to take them out early.
So if they never respond, last question. So if they never respond, then let's say they there was a call this year and the the bondholder doesn't respond until next year. Would they still get that call rate or would they get a different rate, the new interest rate?
So what ends up happening is that they're only going to get paid the interest rate on their bond. And they only get it until the day that we call the bonds. So for example, if we were to follow through with the schedule, which has us getting in the market, closing around sometime mid April, we would actually send the notice to the existing bondholders right after we close, saying, we're taking your bonds out in thirty days. And actually, what happens is that we use the money from the refunding bond issue that we're going to issue. It goes into an escrow that's held by a trust company and only is used to repay the prior bondholders. So on that date, the redemption date, they basically get paid by the escrow agents, the interest that's due to them up to that date. And then there's no other obligation of the township or YCUA to that particular bondholder. Their debt's extinguished because they've been paid.
Okay. Thank you. I I don't want to take anybody else's time. All right. Thanks.
Great, great questions. Any other questions or comments or Tom? Nope. So we're just going to read the resolution to the record. I don't know if there's a need for you to, or Dwayne, to be at the next meeting unless I don't know. It's up to you. It's almost seven.
Yeah.
That's your pleasure. I'm happy to participate if you want to. Otherwise.
Are you at home or with?
I'm at home. Yes.
Industrial look behind you. Okay.
It's my, I'm I'm relegated to my basement.
Right. Well, there won't. It'd be nice if you were here in case other other residents had questions too. Thank you.
I'll 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 stay on for and and join the the meeting at seven.
Thank you, Tom. All right. The next item is Resolution twenty twenty oh one, which is the poverty exemption guidelines. And Brian McCleary is on the Zoom meeting with us. He is our deputy assessor. We have to do this every year, correct, Brian? And you have your hand raised, Brian?
Yes. Good evening. So, yeah, this is our typical poverty exemption that we do every year to give the state mandates that we have a board resolution approving our process. One of the changes this year is I we just spent State Tax Commission meeting today in which the state is trying to develop a mandated standardized form for the application of the poverty exemption so that every jurisdiction would have the same form. And so that was approved today by the State Tax Commission. But they don't have a final form yet. So we're asking to to go ahead and approve our resolution and an application. But then at such time as the state finalizes their form or mandated that we will then use their application. But it's basically the everything is the resolution and everything is every year we have to do that.
Right. Brian, could you just tell the process that people go through for this? And when they have to apply?
So basically, the poverty exemption, people apply at our March Board or a July Board or a December Board. They have, the board has the authority to grant it. And those people that can't contribute to the public need or public good through poverty, they can then have an application and it's posted on our website. And we have packets and actually the county has the packets and it's on their website. And then so they can fill out this application. And and if they qualify, they they could pay a percentage or portion of of their taxes. They don't pay the whole thing. Prior to this year, we used a formula base where we took into account the homestead credit at the state. And we kind of backed into what the minimum taxable value would be, and that's what their value would be. With this new law that passed and it's on the resolution number five is that the state is saying that you you can't do these formula based anymore. You have to set a a percentage. It can be twenty five percent, fifty percent, or a hundred percent reduction. And and it's not necessarily a a bad thing and and that in our prior formula, somebody could have poverty and and qualify income wise, whereas they didn't make enough money to exceed the guideline. And that if we did the formula and then we looked at their taxable value, the calculated tax of taxable value from the formula is lower than what they currently, or I'm sorry, is higher than what they currently have on the assessment rule. So it didn't. So so they would, we'd say, okay, well, you're qualified income wise, but we're going to deny it because your taxable value is just too low, whether it's through the recession or you know, when when all the taxable values went down. And so in this case, the state's saying you have to at a minimum give them twenty five percent. If this person is need based, they qualify income wise, then you have to give them something. You just can't deny them. And so so that that I would, that's a good thing. Because a lot of people in that situation could benefit from it. But other than that, everything else is 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 the same. And it's, they apply, the board takes a look at at their income, their assets. And then we determine with the board, it's actually the board's jurisdiction determines that they qualify for it. And then i- in this case, with the new law, what percentage they should get twenty five or fifty or a hundred percent. Now, in the, because we generally don't do a hundred percent here at the township because we feel that at some point they should contribute to at some point for, you know, garbage pickup or what have you. So we we have placed in our unit number five, we put twenty five percent and fifty percent is the minimum. And the state has determined that those are the percentages. If we go out, if we want to go seventy five percent or forty percent, we have to then contact the state and get permission from them to go at a percentage different than what they've approved. So that's kind of where we're at. It's kind of complicated with the the new law. But if there's any questions, I can kind of speak directly.
And I do know that Washoe County gives a lot of referrals to our assessing department.
Yes.
University of Michigan. There's different organizations that refer people to our assessment. Yeah.
Especially if somebody has delinquent taxes at the county, one of the first things they do is try and direct people over to the townships and file these forms i- if they're, if they would qualify income wise. And there is a lot of foreclosure prevention workshops we've worked with. And there's, yeah, through U of M. They all have our guidelines and and they are referring people to us.
Good. Okay, Debbie, trustee's fine.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. The first question I'm wondering about is, like, again, we're collecting a lot of information from people that is confidential. What happens with that information? Do we destroy it? Do we return it? What happens with that information once we've collected it? If we're not going to, I guess even I.
So they're filing a petition with the Board of Review, and that is public information. Having said that, we don't, whatever the tax returns, all the information, it's redacted out. That is not available. Somebody can't come in and do a FOIA request on that. But having said that, the the fact that if if my neighbor applied for a poverty exemption, that's part of public record. And and people will be able to determine that person is, and then they'll usually say, well, wait a minute. He just bought a new boat or, you know, just, I mean, i- it is public information. You're you're asking for a reduction in taxes from the public rule, assessment. But but having said that, we redact out and we're not going to provide confidential information to the public.
We we would not base our decision on someone else saying something like that about, right? Okay. And then the other question I have is so I heard you say that we often get referrals to us. And is there what who would we refer somebody to if they needed help with the process? Like, is there a place? Because I could see, looking at the form, that there could be people who need this relief. And the form could be difficult to complete. Do we have a way of referring someone? Or is it something that we do in-house if somebody needs help or support in completing the process?
We in-house, we're willing to work with. It gets kind of hard with COVID, the way things are. But but at any time, people can come and we can walk them through the forms. I know there is a housing bureau for seniors. And it was usually run by interns from U of M. And they they fill out the forms for for people. And I I'm sure the county has their foreclosure prevention, so they can help them. But but certainly here, I our staff is really good. They'll sit down and they'll walk through forms with people and and discuss what what we need. And then usually if we get something and we look through the packet and we're like, okay, we need more information, we're contacting them. It's kind of a, you know, we're working with people to to go through the process.
Yeah, that's good to hear. Is there a way that if someone got the paperwork, and I know everything's harder with COVID, that there could be an actual, like, something that they're given with them that said, you know, to fill out this form if you need support, that it could be spelled out, or there could be some contact information that went right with it to people so that?
Absolutely. We have, it's a packet. And so, for example, we have the the water, the break on the water, those forms, and and there's other documents in there. And then there's our contact information. And and so the the, of course, you just see in the application, but there the the packet is probably twice that size, you know, with everything we provide for them.
Thank you.
Quick one.
Um, thank you, Brian. I know that I've asked you this before, but I am always confused about when this application is due for our residents.
So that's a good question. So the the board has the authority to act on it for March, July, and December Boards of Review. So if somebody, a lot of times for March, somebody will submit an application and it's not complete, or they have to get their taxes. You know, we contacted them and we said, okay, will you have another board? That you have two other boards. But I mean, you can kind of wait till the next if you can't complete everything. So typically, we we would like to have it a day ahead of time before the end of the Board of Review. But I mean, if they came in the day, I mean, we're not gonna if it's emailed or sent to us, or they drop it off the day of, we'll look through and process it as long as our board's in session. So ju- just as long, I mean, the deadline, it's the the board's kind of change every year, but it's if they came, like, well, we have our March Board is meeting eighth, ninth, and tenth. If they came in on the tenth, as long as we had enough time to process it, we're going to take their application. Our concern is that if you come in on the tenth, and then we look it over and it's half complete, or we need more information. So we're always telling people, hey, get it into us early so we can review it and kind of give you more feedback on it. But certainly, it's it's more of a problem or more stressful in December because that's the last time that the board can act on it. And if you miss our December board, there's no way that you can get the poverty exemption for that year at this point. But but we'll take it the day of, really. Yeah, I mean, we don't like to. But we we like a little bit of time to work on it and and discuss with people and help them out.
Thank you. That was really helpful.
Brian, any other questions or comments? The next item is just regarding the actual dates that are set for the Board of Review. We have to do this every year too by by law. So any questions on that item? All right. Number four.
Sorry, is there anybody else? Um, so I'm I'm wondering, so maybe I didn't read this part. So if they apply and they get that exemption, I know there's two tax periods, two time, two times when the taxes are due. Does that exemption apply for both of those texts, like the winter and the summer? Or just for one of them? Or how does that work if?
So what we do, this exemption is a reduction on the assessed value. So if we do a twenty five percent, or I'm sorry, the taxable value, if we do a percentage adjustment on that, it it'll affect both bills because we're redoing the, reducing the taxable value and then applying a millidrate to that. So it's on both bills.
But the Board of Review is in March and the bills are due February fourteen.
That's from the prior year. So it's, so so what this March Board of Review is going to act on is the twenty twenty one taxable value, which will be then that March, or that July bill and December.
And they have to apply every year, correct, Brian?
Yes. There's part of the law that was changing is they have a a vehicle that they the board can choose to extend it to three years. We're still working through that process. But then the State Tax Commission then said, if you do that, you then have to audit them. And what's an audit going to be other than making them fill out and submit everything? So if they have to do that anyways, let's so it this is the first year that it just came in in January, the the governor signed it at the end of the year. So we're process, working through that process. But at the at this point, it would take the board's approval to accept that three year. But we don't have an audit process at this point, and we haven't kind of worked through that. So for the for this year, we're going to do the 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 one year.
The Township Board or the Board of Review?
The Township Board. Actually, the Board Township Board would have to approve it by. The Township Board, actually, the Board Township Board would have to approve it by a resolution, but so, yeah, it is one year at a time.
All right, any other questions or comments? Thank you so much, Brian. The next item is owner's dam safety program, which is Resolution twenty-twenty dash oh-two. Is Mike, Mike Sarin is, Mike, are you with us? Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you well, so he can't show his video because of unreliable internet services, so go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, good evening, Madam Chair and the board. Again, this year, in front of you is a resolution for owner's dam safety program. This is something we do every year to reaffirm our commitment to dam safety to the hydroelectric dam on Fort Lake. This is a Federal Energy Regulatory Commission requirement that we have a program in place to outline our responsibilities and who does what, ensure that we have a safe project. And so we can maintain a reliable operation. Again, this is something we do every year and attaches all the responsibilities in the document. So this this part tonight in front of you is just one part of many within the owner's dam safety program.
Are there questions or comments for our dam operator? No, thank you, Michael. The next item is for request to approve agreements with Washoe County Road Commission for traffic calming devices on Rosedale in the amount of twenty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-two and on a Dega in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred and twelve. Any questions on that? Michael, Randic helps us process this, these requests and works with the our accounting department as well as with the Washington County Road Commission. So we do these every year. Any questions, kind of?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Oh, Jimmy, I'm sorry, I look for hands now, I'm so sorry.
Were these by way of petition, traffic calming devices?
Yes, is Michael Randic still with us? I see that he has left us, but yeah, there is a petition that's required. A lot of times, residents are concerned that they will have to pay an increased tax because of this addition to the neighborhood, but there's no increase in taxes and it's a pretty rigorous process that they go through in order to get speed homes that have to meet certain conditions by the Road Commission, and it is a petition by an approval by a certain number of residents in that area, so. Michael. Did I answer your question, Jimmy?
Yes, you did, thank you.
All right.
I apologize, I had to take a quick break. If there are any other questions about these speed home projects, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Michael. And the next item is a request to approve the agreement with Washoe County for Reimagine Washonaw. This is three thousand dollars, we budget for it for several years now. Last year, we completed the section from Gulfside going east to around the big boy and has has a pull-off and the sidewalk is just beautiful. I know Jason and Mike Hoffmeister were involved with it as well, and we all walked it, as well as Mike Randic, so this helps retain a person that assists us through the process. And Jason is on Zoom meeting with us and can answer questions if you have any.
Yeah, good evening, Board of Trustees, hopefully you folks had a chance to take a look at the memo I had put forward for you. This is basically like the supervisor just mentioned, this is a that we pay for the county planning office to provide us with a beneficial services that kind of go along with the reimagine Washonaw plan. And there's a scope of work that they provided that kind of outlines the work that they're willing to provide for the three thousand dollar fee, which has been the same fee that the township's paid since twenty nineteen for their services. And based on the planning work that they provide and their expertise, I will say that the three thousand dollars that they're asking for in compensation is very reasonable as far as money goes and and planning expertise and the amount of help that they give the township by the way of transportation, planning and mid-block crossing, development and design. They helped assist, like the supervisor said, with some sidewalk infill along Washonaw Avenue. And then Nathan Voight, who's also the the county's planner, also assists with us with Brownfield Development and a handful of other things. So this is for reimagine Washonaw, but again, it's it's money very well spent. And the the staff at the county at their planning office are very professional and and very knowledgeable. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you folks might have.
Are there any questions or comments? Thank you, Jason. The next item is request to approve the agreement with Michigan Mission Control GGLC, I think. But I think John Hines, yes, is on the Zoom call and he can, this is exciting. So it's new to the township, I know that the attorney has reviewed it and approved it. And I'm not sure if Angela Burgess is also. So wanting to guys want to handle this great agenda item. Mr. Heinz?
Oh, yeah, sorry, my internet's a little spotty.
Did you want to just talk about this?
Oh, yes, Michigan Control Contract, they're a company that specializes in esports gaming. So they are a platform similar to Civic Rec, which is what we use for our program registration. So this agreement is with them, but also with Pittsfield Township and the City of Celine, Celine Rec Center. So the three of us creating this partnership to offer esports to the Washonaw area and greater southeast Michigan. So it gives opportunities for people to, much like a sport league, sign up to play these games like Rocket League, Mario Kart Fortnite, to play competitively, pay registration fees, play for a prize, and then create some revenue where especially in-person activities would be lacking this year.
Any questions or comments on the esports now that we have in White Town? Thank you. The next item. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Newman.
Yes, is this like between three rec centers? Or can anybody, do you have to be a member of a rec center? Or is it just a a person in the township?
So the agreement, we are hosting these leagues through the three rec centers, but anyone can join them, anyone that's got, you can play on PC, Xbox, Nintendo, or PlayStation, just depending on the games that we choose to offer.
Okay, that I would probably join a rec center just to be a part of the league. But, yeah, I just wanted to know, you know, how that worked.
Oh, of course, yeah, so it's just, you know, much how they have a connection where they play on live or whatever their online platform is, and they can play against anyone. This is just more so to centralized playing local and playing for something, whether it be bragging rights or if we do a bigger ticket, maybe do a tournament or an in-person tournament when things are back to being open and normal.
Okay. Yeah, sounds exciting.
Yeah, we have a lot of plans for it, but you know, when we get off the ground, we'll kind of start smaller and then kind of build towards some of the more big-ticket tournaments, so we're excited.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee's question.
Well, I just wondered, especially might be for attorney winners, I know that he mentioned the part about the bank name, the routing number and the account number. So I wondered, what was the resolution for that concern? Are we going to, like, are we gonna do the contract with that in it, or?
Yeah, I think Stan can probably also chime in, but I defer that to Javana and to Stan. And they both were comfortable that the information is, there's enough firewalls there that there can only be a deposit into the account, no withdrawals. So they were very comfortable that that's been town's policy. I probably am always a bit more gun-shy, maybe because, just because, effectively, over the years, I haven't been used to giving out that kind of information, but I think it's more of a common than maybe what I even appreciate. But they were very comfortable that everything was protected from the from the standpoint of what can deposits as opposed to withdrawals.
Good question. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we can go on, or we can take a small break before the board meeting, that would be. Is that all right with everyone? All right, so we're going to adjourn the work session at six forty-two and we'll be back at seven o'clock to start again. And when we start, according to the rules that I read, we do have to say where we're at. So, you know, I'm Brenda Stumbo in Ypsilanti Township. And each board member has to say where they're at, and I just wanted to remind people of that. That's a new rule. And you're with us. All right, we'll see y'all at seven. We'll need a motion, I did send a few comments to Clerk Rowe earlier today regarding some of the suggestions for the minutes.
And I would so move the consent agenda.
Support Eldridge.
We have a motion by Gerald Rowe, support by Eldridge to approve the consent agenda with some of the changes that have been submitted. Are there any other questions or comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Newman did sign on a few minutes later. Mr. Newman, could you just, as a trustee, we're required to say that we're in Ypsilanti Township, if you're in Ypsilanti Township. You gotta.
Yes, I am in Ypsilanti Township, I'm a resident.
No, I mean, for all the Zoom meetings, we now have to state that we're in Ypsilanti Township or where we're at when we are on the Zoom meeting. So just John Newman, Ypsilanti Township President, right?
Yeah, John Newman, Ypsilanti Township President, yes.
Thank you so much, I just wanted to get that on the record.
Okay.
And the next item is the attorney's report. Mr. Winters?
Yes, Madam Chair, board members. The last board meeting we had was back on December fifteenth. Been a long five weeks, it seems like. During that time period, I have continued to share with all of you updates in regards to a wide variety of of issues. And I've also tried to include previous letters that were written back before November twentieth for the benefit of the new board members, because I do believe context is very important in order to assist everyone in having the same information. And so those updates have been very detailed and there's no need for me to obviously go into a list of all the different types of projects we're involved, we're involved with. I would take a moment to highlight that we did have a conference call with representatives of the Michigan Land Bank, Washonaw County Brownfield, and also the Agle, it used to be the DEQ in regards to the redevelopment of nine twenty-three E Course Road. That, of course, is the former Forbes Dry Cleaners. And many of you have heard that, have seen letters for six years on this property. This was the property that was contaminated due to the release of a carcinogen referred to as PERC at that site. It leached onto residential properties on Davis Street. And to the credit of the State of Michigan and Michigan Land Bank, they actually took ownership of this property. And approximately four to five million dollars later, this property is on its way to being cleaned up. You probably remember some of the letters where in regards to the residential properties on Davis Street, the individuals living in those two houses had to be relocated for a period of weeks, and the garages themselves had to be torn down, brand-new ones rebuilt in order for the contaminated soil to be removed. It's been quite an undertaking. During the January sixth, it was a meeting, there were a number of individuals on the phone call, as well as Township Plan Director Jason, Mike Randic, I believe Belinda Kinsley was on there. And the state really would like the township to be involved in the redevelopment plans for nine twenty-three E Course Road. We, I did share with them previously the updated master plan that was done for E Course and Michigan Avenue and the zoning ordinance. And that was helpful. But we have another conference call coming up at the end of this month. And hopefully, the full-time officials can also participate in this. And the reason why I am urging you to review everything that we discussed and was sent over is this redevelopment of E Course Road, starting at the Forbes Cleaner's site, could be the catalyst needed to jumpstart E Course Road in general. Sometimes it takes the one, the one development, the sort of kickstart other redevelopment along along a commercial corridor. I think all of us would like to see E Course Road and Eastern Michigan Avenue be redeveloped in a way that would enhance the those corridors, as well as be a benefit to the neighboring properties, et cetera. So this may be the one chance we'll have to have your input received and also continue to work with our our state partners, because they have put a tremendous amount of funds into the property. And I think there's two million dollars that's allocated for this cleanup at nine twenty-three E Course Road. So they're anxious to get it going this spring and summer. And so, again, this could be the beginning of that redevelopment that we were hoping for at the time the master plan was updated. Likewise, in regards to a couple of court cases, I had mentioned before that and they call it Village, continues to be one that the township is going to try and hold the property owners accountable in regards to not complying with previous court orders in regards to installation of a fire suppression. There are two remaining businesses there at that shopping center. And it's our belief that from the reviews done by the Fire Marshal and other persons from the Building Department, that those businesses are at risk due to lack of fire suppression. So there is an evidentiary hearing scheduled on February twenty-sixth before new, for Judge Brown. This case had previously been assigned to the Schwartz who retired, so there was a hearing scheduled in December. They had to be rescheduled because, again, the judge, the judge has not been assigned to this case. In regards to one other case, the township continues to aggressively take a zero tolerance on property owners who allow their properties to be utilized for manufacture and delivery of drugs. One of those houses was that seventeen seventy-seven West Michigan Avenue's apartment complex. And the CAT team spent months developing, developing the necessary evidence to confirm what was going on at that location that was impacting the quality of life for all the other residents in that small apartment complex. There is a showcase hearing on February the seventh for Judge Connors. And one of the issues that came up during that conversation was the CAT team had been reassigned to patrol duties for, at that time, we were told, I believe, until March. I think that between I think that between Supervisor Stumbo, OCS Director Mike Radzick, and some of the letters that were to all of you, we strongly objected to the CAT team being reassigned. And I think that the good news is that over the weekend Supervisor Stumbo and Mr. Radzick were advised that the CAT team is going to be reestablished, I believe, first of February or sometime in the next couple of weeks. So that, that is something that has worked very well in the township. And I know that we were getting a lot of phone calls from residents who like to be the eyes and ears of their neighborhood, and they are the best individuals that can tell when things are going amiss. If there's a lot of traffic coming and going in hours of the day and night for a few minutes here and there, that usually is something that the police would like to be aware of to, to know what's going on in terms of drug trafficking. And I guess on a different note altogether, it's more of a personal reflection, because a lot of this takes place during the time period that we're all still somewhat quarantined. I guess all of us are quarantined. And the fact that you're having to give your locations, or at least look at all different backgrounds, shows that we're not gathered at what would normally be the Township Civic Center. And I really thought back in March of last year that we would somehow gather again under the, at the Civic Center long before now, but that doesn't appear to be the case. And what I'm leading up to is that I think it's important for every township official, especially the, as you go through your careers, and as you have boards that will come and go, and new members, that you at least take a moment and just reflect, how was it possible for me to become a member of the Ypsilanti Township Board of Trustees? How, how was it that I am in a position of trust and fiduciary capacity to serve the residents of Ypsilanti Township? And when you answer that question, you have to look back on a number of people that paved the way for all of you, myself included, to be in a position where we can continue the township's mission statement of being, in your case, a public servant for all the township residents. One of those visionaries that we lost during the early part of January was Tilden Ray Stumble. In fact, Tilden Ray Stumble was the gentleman, as many of you know, that the Township Civic Center was named, dedicated for in 2016. In 2016, Township Board dedicated the, renamed or dedicated the Civic Center to the Tilden Ray Stumble Civic Center. At the same time, they dedicated the 14B District Court to the Honorable John B. Collins. They certainly were visionaries for the township. And they paved the way for many of us to be in a position to be here today. In 2017, we lost Judge Collins. And in 2021, we lost Tilden Ray Stumble. Isaac Newton, the famed mathematician, scientist, is quoted as being the one quoted, just as saying that if, the if I have seen further than others, it is by standing upon the shoulders of giants. And I think all of, all of you have, are standing on the shoulders of your own giants over your, over your careers, whether it's been your, your parents, siblings. In my case, both, see, my father and my elementary school teacher, Mrs. Johnny Chaney, who they named a school after, in the former Willerun School District. That we all have learned from those giants. TR Stumble was a giant in terms of his vision for Ypsilanti Township, and what he meant to Ypsilanti Township, and what he meant to many, to many people who came his way. And I just think it's important that we acknowledge all the men and women that made it possible for us to continue that, that legacy. And someone also once said that when you recognize that your success comes, at least in part, from standing on the shoulders of others, it humbles you. You realize that you're not isolated or indispensable. We all need other people. When you're open to learning from others, you set yourself up for the kind of success that can lead to significance. So I would be the first one to say that I, I stand on the shoulders of many of these individuals that have come along in our lifetime, as well as TR Stumble. And I just think that as a board, as you go forward, and sometimes I get kid about being the so-called historian, and that's okay, that's a good thing, because I think history is important. But I do believe right now that we all have to continue to keep in mind, how did we get here? Who was our mentor? Who guided us along the way? And who do we look to even today for the right course to follow? And I would be remiss if I did not take a moment, because the irony is that but for the COVID, we would be meeting at the Tilden Ray Stumble Civic Center this evening. But since we cannot be there, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of one of the great men of Ypsilanti Township, and what he meant to this township, and the vision he had. The township went from a very sleepy, Willerun village to becoming the seventh largest township in the state of Michigan. It went from being a township when they, when they asked, back in the 1950s, to be annexed to the city of Ypsilanti, was told, thanks, but no thanks. We do not want to partner with you, Ypsilanti Township. Go your own way. And so the township did. And the township went on to become, you know, again, the success story that it has, because of great men and women who have, who we stood on their shoulders. And so as you go into 2021, I cannot help but just, you know, again, don't want to abuse at the time, just always keep in mind that all of us are standing on our shoulders of giants. And that we need to keep that in mind, remind ourselves, so we can all learn from each other, and we can all realize that none of us are indispensable. But we can, but we do have a significant role to play, and I'll do what I can to do my part. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I would, one thing that Tiara always asked me, what did you do today for your residents? And he asks me that almost every day. So I just wanted to share his perspective of being a public servant. And so what did you do today? And who did you help? And how, you know, what's better for the community? So he's going to be missed, but not forgotten. Thank you, Doug. The next agenda item is Resolution 202003, Resolution to Proven Refunding Contract Between the Ypsilanti Community Utility Authority and Ypsilanti Township. Clerk Rowe, could you read the resolution?
Yes, I have, um, I probably, oh, I am unmuted. I have Resolution 2021-03, Approving a Refunding Contract. This is between the Charter Township of Ypsilanti and YCUA. I, whereas it is deemed necessary to refund certain maturities of the Ypsilanti Community Utilities Authority 2011 refunding bonds, so as to produce interest savings to the township. And whereas a refunding contract has been prepared between the Township and the Ypsilanti Community Utilities Authority, Authority, also known as YACCA, to provide for the refunding of certain maturities of the prior bonds. And whereas pursuant to the refunding contract, YCUA plans to issue refunding bonds designated 2021 refunding bonds. And whereas this governing body has carefully reviewed the proposed refunding contract and finds that it provides the best means for accomplishing the necessary savings to the township. Now therefore be resolved that, one, the refunding contract describing the preamble to this resolution is approved, and the supervisor and the township clerk of the township are directed to execute and deliver the contract on behalf of the township. Two, the supervisor, the township clerk, and the township treasurer, each is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the township any closing document or certificate, as may be required by YACCA or the purchaser of the refunding bonds. The township hereby covenants to take all action within its control, to the extent permitted by law, necessary to maintain that execution of the interest of the refunding bonds from gross income for federal income tax purposes under the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended, including but not limited to actions regulating to the rebate of arbitrage, I did look that up, earnings, and expenditure and investments of proceeds of the refunding bonds and monies deemed to the proceeds of the refunding bonds. Three, the supervisor, the township clerk, and the township treasurer is each individually hereby authorized and directed to approve the circulation of a preliminary official statement and a final official statement describing the refunding bonds and to execute a final official statement on behalf of the township. Four, the township shall enter into an undertaking for the benefit of the holders and beneficial owners of the refunding bonds and shall comply with the requirements of Rule 15C2-12 of the Securities and Exchange Commission Regarding Continuing Disclosure. The supervisor, the township clerk, and the township treasurer, each is authorized to execute and deliver the undertaking on behalf of the township. Five, all resolutions and parts of resolutions in conflict with this resolution be and the same hereby are repealed. I would so move the resolution.
Support Wilson.
Motion Gerald Rowe, support Trustee Wilson. Questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Trustee Wilson.
What was the total cost on the refunding of these bonds? Do we still have the representatives?
Yeah, Mr. Collins, Tom Collins.
Yes, good evening. So the estimated costs of refunding are approximately $90,000. So those costs would be built into the actual bonds that would, that we would issue. And then, and then we would use those proceeds to pay those costs. So there's not any out-of-pocket cost that the township would have to come out for. It would be built into the financing, and any savings analysis that we're showing includes those costs. So it's net of those costs.
Thank you.
Just for the person doing the minutes, could you give your name and the company you work for?
Yes, sorry, Tom Coles with Miller Canfield. We're bond counsel to the township and YCUA.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? We discussed this in work session? No? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None, motion carries. Number two is a Resolution 202001, Poverty Exemption Guidelines. Clerk Rowe?
I have Resolution Number 2021-01, Poverty Exemption Guidelines and Application. Whereas the homestead of persons who, in the judgment of the Board of Review, by reason of poverty are unable to contribute to the public charges is eligible for exemption in whole or part from taxation under Section 7U of the Michigan Property Tax Act, Public Act 206 of 1893. And whereas pursuant to Section 211.7U, Ypsilanti Town, Ypsilanti Charter Township, Washtenaw County adopts the following guidelines in application for the Board of Review to implement. The guidelines shall include but not be limited to, for the specific income and asset levels of the claimant and all persons residing in the household, including any property tax credit returns filed in the current or immediately preceding year. To be eligible, a person shall do the following on an annual basis. One, be an owner and occupant as a homestead, primary residence, the property, the property for which an exemption is requested as of tax day, December 31st of the preceding year. Two, file a claim with the Board of Review accompanied by federal and state income tax returns for all persons residing in the homestead, including property tax credit returns filed in the current or immediately preceding year. Three, meet the income threshold guidelines adopted by the Township Board. The income threshold as adopted is that all household income cannot exceed 30% of the median income for Ann Arbor in Washtenaw County, as published by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, as of December 31st of the preceding year. These income thresholds will be used as long as they are higher than the federal poverty guidelines as determined annually by the United States Office of Management and Budget. Four, meet the maximum asset eligibility test as follows. Assets other than the taxpayer's primary residence, standard mode of transportation, and usual household goods valued at more than $25,000 will be considered and added to the household income to determine eligibility. Five, due to Public Act 253 of 2020, changes to MCL 211.7U, the guidelines will now provide for a partial exemption equal to 25% or 50% reduction in taxable value. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Review shall follow the above stated policy, guidelines, and application in granting or denying exemptions. I would so move Resolution Number 21-01.
Support Eldridge.
Motion Rowe, support Eldridge. Discussion or comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Number three is request to approve the 2021 Board of Review meeting dates.
So move Gerald Rowe.
Motion Gerald Rowe?
Support Wilson.
Wilson to approve the the dates for the Board of Review, which will be Tuesday, March 2nd, from 9:00 to 10:00. Public hearings will be Monday, March 8, 9:00 to 4:00; Tuesday, March 9, 9:00 to 4:00; Wednesday, March 10, 5:00 to 9:00. And I'm, I'm wondering if these are going to be for, via Zoom or phone or... Up, I know, because I don't see Brian on this, but that's a good question, just to know. There's some things that we are required, like elections, to allow people in the building, and that might be one of them, I'm thinking. All right, we have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The next item is Resolution 2020-02, which is a owner's dam safety program. Clerk Rowe?
All right, I have Resolution Number 2021-02, the Owner Dam Safety Program. Whereas the Charter Township of Ypsilanti in Washtenaw County, Michigan, currently holding a license with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, also known as FERC, to operate the Ford Lake Hydroelectric Project, Number 5334. And whereas the FERC requires the Charter Township of Ypsilanti to develop, implement, fund, and continue to support the ODSP, per the FERC guideline, for the project until such a time that the Charter Township of Ypsilanti releases ownership, or the project is no longer under the jurisdiction of FERC. And whereas the ODSP document clearly defines the responsibility for the Charter Township of Ypsilanti and its employees and consultants. And whereas the purpose of this resolution is not new to the Charter Township of Ypsilanti, but rather a rededication to dam safety and the responsibility that come with owning the project. And whereas the action of this document, the Charter Township of Ypsilanti, is showing its commitment to the FERC to operate a safe project, prioritizing safety over any other goals. And now therefore be resolved that the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Board of Trustees acknowledges the Owner Dam Safety Program to maintain compliance with the FERC and define the role of the Charter Township of Ypsilanti related to the project. I would so move the resolution.
Support Peterson.
Motion Gerald Rowe, support Peterson. Questions or comments? This is an annual resolution that we do for, for the requirements of FERC, which is our dam, our hydro dam in Ypsilanti Township, which I would love everyone to have the opportunity to see sometime. Mike is not on this call, but, or the Zoom meeting now. He was at the work session. They do an amazing job, and I, I really encourage people, once this pandemic is, is controlled, that people go by and see it and take your family and make appointments, because it's the coolest thing, one of the coolest things we have in the township. We have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved. The next item is request to approve agreements with Washtenaw County Road Commission for the installation of traffic calming devices on Rosedale Road in the amount of $24,862, and on Anadega Avenue in the amount of $9,912. Both budgeted in line item 101-446-000818022.
So moved Eldridge.
Support Gerald Row.
There's a motion, Eldridge, support Gerald Row. Michael Ranzick, did you have anything to say?
These are standard speed home projects, technically known as traffic calming devices. These were facilitated by resident property owners on both streets that submitted petitions to the Washtenaw County Road Commission. On the case of Rosedale, it was unanimous. There were only five or six property owners involved. Rosedale is a cut through between Washtenaw and Packard, right along the eastern edge of the Buckman Ford dealership. This will greatly enhance traffic safety there. In the case of Anadega, township installed speed homes on Anadega many, many years ago. But they did receive recent requests to add one more just east of Eugene Street. And the road commission studied it and determined that that would greatly enhance traffic safety. And so they're asking us to approve the addition of one additional hump on Anadega Street in West Willow. And I would recommend approval of both.
Excellent. Thank you, Michael. Questions or comments? And Mike? I know the residents will be excited to have these installed this year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is request to approve the agreement with Washtenaw County for services in relation to reimagine Washtenaw for twenty twenty one in the amount of three thousand dollars, which is budgeted in line item one oh one nine five six zero 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 eight oh one zero zero zero.
So moved Gerald Row.
Support Eldridge.
We have a motion by Gerald Rose, support by Eldridge to approve the agenda item. Jason discussed it in the work session. He's available now. Does anyone have any questions? Here, okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the request to approve agreement with Michigan Mission Control GG Inc. for the esports opportunities with fees budgeted in line item two three zero seven five one zero 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 seven four zero one hundred.
So moved Gerald Row.
Motion Gerald Rose, support Peterson. Was that correct? Did I hear that?
That's fine. Support.
Okay. Discussion. I know the township attorney reviewed it and it's in proper form is any questions or comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. Number A is request to approve the agreement with Carlisle Warpman to assist with the development of an Ypsilanti Township dog park. Motion Swanson, was that correct?
That'd be fine, but I could support too.
Support Eldridge. Mr. Hoffmeister is on the Zoom meeting to explain this. Finally moving forward with a twenty nineteen goal, right? Or I think it started in twenty nineteen.
Yes, good evening. Mike Hoffmeister, residential services director. In front of you is an agreement with Carlisle Warpman and Associates to assist the township with evaluating all of our site options for a dog park, formulating conceptual plans, hosting public meetings, which we feel is very important when developing a new park site is similar to what we did with the skate park to provide public input for their thoughts and questions and comments they might have. And then develop with the presentation to you all when we come back to go to bid for the project. So that's the first step in the dog park development project.
Questions or comments from board members? I do know the park commission also is excited to have this happen. And I know that Gloria and Debbie Swanson was on the park commission previously and it's it's a process for sure. I appreciate the community involvement and the evaluation from an environmental standpoint. That was always one of my concerns, just to make sure that it's environmentally safe and how do we address it? So skate park, dog park, kind of cool, I think, but we have a motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Michael, for bringing it forward. Number nine is request to approve letter of agreement with Spicer Group for development of a concept plan and grant application for Clubview Park in the amount of twelve thousand dollars, which is budgeted in line item two twelve, two twelve, zero 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 eight oh one zero zero zero.
Move to approve.
Motion Wilson. Support Peterson. Michael?
Yes, this is a letter agreement with Spicer Group, whom we do a lot of work with. They were contracted to assist us with MDNR grant applications in two thousand and twenty, one of which we were awarded for Community Center Park. We did not receive the initial grant application for Clubview Park tennis court renovations. In two thousand and twenty, we did a lot for a recreation passport grant. After meeting with MDNR after our initial denial that we got from them this year, we all came to the agreeance that we have a better chance at receiving the grant dollars if we reapply for the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant. So that's what we're going to do. We're going to try one more time. Those those tennis courts are also in need of repair. So we feel it's important to create a safe, safe space out there at that park as well. So we're going to try and apply for that grant one more time.
And this is tennis and pickleball.
That is correct. Yep.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, Debbie? Do you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to say thank you. I know that at one point there was a lot of questions about whether we could even keep tennis courts. And so I'm so grateful that we're looking at ways to make sure that those surfaces stay in our community and we think beyond just the tennis court concept. So I'm really, really grateful that for the work that's been done on behalf of the tennis courts in the community.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Number 10 is request to approve amendment to the sub award of federal financial assistance for the Scooner Cove Bus Stop.
So moved Gerald Row.
Support Swanson.
We have a motion by Gerald Rose, support by Swanson to approve the sub award federal financial assistant for the Scooner Cove Bus Stop. Michael?
Yes, this agenda item directly relates to the next agenda item. During construction, it was discovered that a lot of the sub base and HMA that was previously installed was poorly done, or there was no sub base at all, which is unfortunate because we can't really discover that until we get into the ground. The only geotechnical surveys that were done prior to construction were done where the actual bus stop has gone. This is directly related to the addition of the trail that was added to connect to the apartment complex. So this is a sub award agreement that we've come back to you a couple of times now to realign some of the CDBG funding. The the and I'll just speak to both agenda items simply because they're directly tied to one another. The the next agenda item is the change order that explains the difference as to why there are approximately twenty four thousand nine hundred and seventy seven dollars over contract. Luckily, we have some money left over from the twenty nineteen CDBG funding allowance that allows us to transfer twenty three thousand dollars into the Scooner Cove project, only requiring approximately fifteen hundred dollars of township funds to be spent due to this change. So it was certainly a change order that we didn't see coming. OHM did, who we have contracted with for construction engineering services, did work hard to negotiate with our contractor to lower the price as far as possible. So I do appreciate their efforts in making that happen. But this is this is the situation we're in once we got into the ground a little bit over at Scooner Cove.
And this will be paid for by the grant monies. That's it. Would you like to update the board and the community on the Scooner Cove, actual the bus structure, stop structure being?
Yeah, thank you. So we have been, I know there was some uncertainty related to that route as well as the bus shelter installation. As we were going through this bidding and construction approval process, we recently found out today actually that the bus shelter will be installed April twenty first by the ride and the plan as to is to reinstate that route, I believe, in the fall sometime. So that's great news for the investment that the board and the township has created out there for that bus stop. And we were very lucky and appreciative of the support that we got because I know Supervisor Stumbo was was speaking to the ride about this stop. OHM has been requesting information about this stop. And then Washtenaw County was also assisting us in conversations about the priority for this bus route and stop. So we appreciate all the support and it's great news that they're going to be moving forward with the shelter sooner than later, as well as the route in the very near future.
Yay, good news. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. The next item is to request the change order with OHM for the Scooner Cove Bus Stop project in the amount of twenty four thousand nine hundred and seventy seven dollars and fifty three cents, which is budgeted in line item one oh one nine seven zero triple zero nine seven four one hundred.
Move to approve.
So moved.
Motion Wilson, support Peterson.
Peterson.
Comments? Mike? It's a technical procedure that we need to do. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 12, the request to appoint John Newman to the Washtenaw Area Transportation Study Committee and she will, he will be taking the place of trustee Monica Ross Williams.
Support, so moved.
Support Swanson.
Motion Eldridge, support Swanson. Questions or comments?
Excellent selection.
Thank you.
And I'm so glad that his boss allowed him to do it.
Oh, thank you.
I called and asked to see if it was okay.
Oh, nice. Okay.
Because I didn't I didn't know if they would. And you asked me to ask them before we appointed you. So Greg Deal was very gracious in saying that you can attend these meetings. So we greatly appreciate that as well. We have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Number thirteen says request to set a public hearing for the creation of a special assessment district for Village Grove Streetlights on February sixteenth, twenty twenty one at approximately seven PM.
So moved Gerald Row.
Support Peterson.
We have a motion Gerald Rose, support Gerald Peterson to set the public hearing. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. And this is a request by the developer. Number fourteen is request to set a public hearing for the creation of a special assessment district for Village Grove Camera on February sixteenth, twenty twenty one at approximately seven oh five PM.
So moved Eldridge. Support Wilson.
Motion Eldridge, support trustee Wilson to set this public hearing. And Mr. Winters, did you want to comment on how we got to where we're at or?
Yes, this was the Village Grove was the defendant in a lawsuit that was filed by the township in regards to a number of incidents that happened at Village Grove culminating in one incident in which there was some kind of a drug deal gone bad. Resulted in a number of high powered assault, high powered bullets, assault weapons being used in the drug robbery, people were shot. Bullets went through some of the drywall into other neighboring apartments. Fortunately, none of the residents were injured, but there was several people shot during this incident, which was the end of a it was also again, the culmination of a number of incidents that had happened here. So we filed a lawsuit against the apartment owner, Stuart Bill, and went to court and part of the resolution is to have them actually establish a streetlight district as well as install a security camera that we're going to have access to that will help at least try to figure out from time to time. It's something goes on over there. Who's going in, who's coming out? Mike Ranzick and my law partner, this McLean, were very involved in the negotiation of this in terms of trying to reach a resolution. This is part of the overall agreement. And Mike, we have something further to add in regards to the specifics, but again, it's the result of the township board taking a position that we cannot allow this to continue, that some kind of safeguards being in place for the benefit of the residents. So what took place at the East because Shorebridge Towers, over there in Grove, on a bridge road. So again, it's designed to enhance the safety of the people who live there as well as be a law enforcement tool as needed. In the event something does happen, it's a better way of trying to identify who's coming in, who's coming out in terms of the car vehicles. And again, Mike may have something more to add to it.
Yeah. All right, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number fifteen is a budget amendment. Number one, it's large. It's always large after we close out a new year. So just clerk row, could you read the budget amendment, please?
Yeah, just to give the community a little like brief overview of what they are. Some are for PTO payouts, re budgeting the pedestrian walkway improvements that we're doing. The Scooner Cove Bus Stop bathroom updates for our second floor bathroom upstairs, a few park improvements. And it also includes the dog park item that we just discussed. So that's a little overview and I would bring to you a motion to amend the twenty twenty one budget. Move to increase the general fund by two hundred and five thousand three hundred and fifty seven dollars to nine million one hundred and eighty one eight hundred and sixty two dollars and approve the department line items change changes as outlined. Move to increase the BSNR two fund by two hundred and twenty four thousand dollars, six hundred and sixty five dollars to one million nine hundred and thirty four, two hundred and forty eight dollars and approve the department line item changes as outlined. Move to increase the recreation fund budget by one thousand dollars to seven hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars, two hundred and ninety seven thousand eight hundred and seven dollars, two hundred and ninety to approve the department line items changes outlined. And move to increase the building department fund budget by four hundred and eighty five dollars to seven hundred and seventy three thousand two hundred and twenty nine dollars and approve the department line items changes outline. And finally, move to increase law enforcement fund budget by one thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars to eight million five hundred and thirty seven thousand two hundred and ninety four dollars and to approve the line item changes as outlined. I would so move the budget amendment.
Motion Gerald Row.
Support Eldridge.
Support Eldridge. Are there questions and comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any opposed? All the motion carries unanimously. Under authorization and beds, we have the request to approve the proposal for professional services from CNC Consulting for the creation of a website redesign proposal in the amount of in the cost of a hundred and thirty five dollars per hour budget in line item one oh one two six six zero 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 eight oh one zero zero zero. And I think there's a nine. And I think there's a not to exceed them. Maybe not. A motion would be in order.
Support Gerald Row.
We have a motion support, I didn't know if there was a not to exceed them, there's not. But I know Travis. He'll be. He'll be watching this very carefully. Is Travis on the call? He is not. All right, so this basically is to allow us to go out, this is again. A twenty twenty project that we've been working towards is a revamp of our website. And I know our community will be very happy and. And everyone will be happy when we do a revamp of the website, so it's more. Mobile friendly as well as. A different way presenting the information and we, none of us know how to do it, but. The professional we're hiring will be able to help with the R F Qs for that and. We're looking forward to proceed. Any questions or comments?
I saw on page eight, I think the it's twenty point five consulting hours and the amount is. Two thousand seven hundred sixty seven dollars and fifty cents.
On page what?
Eight of the. Analysis. Do you see it? There's scope of services methodology.
So, so should we say not to exceed? Is that all right with everybody?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Heather Rowe.
Sorry for interrupting. I just wanted to say that I actually talked with Travis and I had a couple of questions about. The agenda item as it was, you know, listed myself and the re, it was intentional that there wasn't, you know, he's not. I say, I think set on that date that you see in the contract there, that's an estimate. And so he wanted to be flexible with that and then also just for, you know. Total comprehensiveness, I did look up that line item and there's, you know, more than enough funds there to to cover. I think his expected costs.
What, how about five thousand? I would, I would feel better if we put a number on it. That's just, you know, we can always come back if we exceed it and I don't know.
Yeah, I agree. Is there an amount that the that line can't go over or in their budget?
No, well, it. I'm guessing it's under professional services, right Heather?
Um, I think that that particular line item I thought had like ninety two thousand dollars in it or something, it's quite a lot. Yeah, Deputy Stanfield, did you have like a better estimate of what Travis was thinking?
Not exactly what he was thinking the total would be, but just for clarification on that page eight. That you guys were looking at that showed the two thousand two hundred and sixty seven. How Travis worked this bid was he sent a scenario is what he put a scenario in his request for proposal. Asking people to tell him how they would handle this problem and how they would fix it. And this particular group, they're a hundred and thirty five dollars per hour, but that two thousand two hundred and sixty seven dollar amount that you see. Is only the cost for that particular scenario that he put in his request for proposal. It's not exactly, it's not really relevant to what the township needs to have done. It's just something that he uses to compare the different people who bid, so they're bidding on kind of the same thing each time.
So it can be more, that's because that's just consulting, so to actually do it.
Yes. Yeah, this company that Travis is looking to hire, they're going to help him create the R F Q. That we need to submit to people, for people to bid on just to redo our website, they're not actually going to be reconstructing it. They're just going to help him create like what we need and what we're looking for to put it into a proposal. Say here, can you guys please bid on this for rebuilding our website? So yeah, that that ten hours is not really relevant to specifically this project.
So these aren't the actual people that will design the website, these are just. These are consultants that will give the plan to someone else.
Correct.
Okay.
They're designing the bid specifications to actually bid out for the complete read. So we often have our engineers do design for websites, for projects. This is a design for a website, but I would still feel better putting a number on it. I tend, I mean, I don't know that number, maybe ten thousand is a better number, but like I don't want to just give a blank check. I don't want to do that and I want to move it and I want to move it forward. Trustee. Yes, trust, trust.
I just feel, you know, we understand this necessity for growth, for the township, the network, the. Do, you know, whatever they need to do for the website, but I feel that. I mean, how many hours is it going to take for them to do this consolidating work? And, you know, I would feel good about also putting a. A clip on as far as how much and even if it's, and we understand these things cost money. Even if it's, you know, kind of over the budget for something like this, you know what I mean? But this, I don't see it be time span on how long it would be to create this. To do the consolidating, where is it, three days per day or eight hours a day, is it two weeks? Of something like that.
Has, has there been any? In the, in the contract, it says twenty point five out consulting hours.
Twenty twenty five?
Twenty point five, which is the twenty seven.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Attorney Winters has his hand raised. Did you mean to raise your hand, Mr. Winters?
Yes, I did. I was just, I was just going to add to the conversation by saying that. I reviewed many contracts that Travis brings forward and they're always a challenge because they're always in that category of. You know, things I don't quite understand in terms of the technology and everything. All that I would add to the conversation is that I do think that on your financial policy, it'd be wise to at least set some kind of bookends. In regards to what the, you know, what, not to exceed them all and then come back. But more importantly, I think, listening to Deputy Clerk Stanfield, that appears that. I didn't quite pick this up when I first read it, if, if this group here is going to design specs. For other parties to bid, then I'm assuming that they're not going to be bidding on those specs. So I don't know exactly if they're in a position where they, if that's been discussed or not, because a lot of these. Cell phone companies or whatever, the, for the websites, I don't know, they probably can do both. But I just want to point that out that if they're actually designing specs to be bitted up, to be bid upon. That we at least had that conversation that we're not expecting them to bid on specs that they themselves are creating. Again, I don't know all the proprietary information they have access to and how that would be an advantage or disadvantage, but I'm just pointing that out that. Maybe that's the last thing on your mind is, is doing that, but I've, we've seen some of that before and I just wanted to bring this to the board's attention.
We will ask Travis and get back with the board, it would be my assumption they are not bidding on this. That would be my assumption and that's never a good thing to do is assume. We'll, we'll get clarity on that and.
Madam Chair.
Yes, trustee Eldridge.
I think I made the motion, could I make an amendment to that and I would just say that. Based on, I thought I heard a hundred and thirty five dollars an hour at twenty point five hours. I would make the motion as part of my motion that this not exceed twenty eight hundred dollars. Because that would cover this amount based on that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, trustee, I mean Clerk Row.
Sorry, I seconded that motion and Stan, I just wanted to clarify that it. The way I understand this, and again, I know it's a confusing proposal because it's like. An engineering thing for I T that we don't usually do, but I don't think that that twenty point five hours. Is an actual like statement of what will be needed for the work to be done. I think that was like a scenario that Travis gave all of these different consulting firms to. You know, help him see how they would handle the work. Again, I'm struggling to articulate it because I'm not, I don't speak in I T languages, but so I guess I would ask if, if. Five thousand would be reasonable to you.
And then we can come back if it needs to be more.
Well, I'm gonna. I'm going to withdraw my motion because now I have too many other questions. If the contract's this confusing, it should probably not. Have been brought to us at this point, so I'm going to withdraw my motion and make a motion to. I want to, yeah, motion to table, I'm sorry, get that brain locked. Till we can get a better idea of the number of hours for this contract and to ensure that this company is not going to be bidding on the very specs that they're putting in place. And the table would just be till February third, I don't think two weeks is going to set a project back too bad.
So we have a motion to table.
Support Wilson.
Support Wilson. No debate and a motion, we'll do a roll call. Trustee, I mean Treasurer Eldridge.
Yes.
Clerk Row.
Yeah.
Trustee Swanson.
Yes.
Trustee Peterson.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yes.
Trustee Newman.
Yes.
Stumbo votes reluctantly, yes as well. I apologize that Travis was not on the line, won't happen again. So that item is tabled to the next meeting. Under other business. It was agreed that it was sent out this afternoon to add to the agenda to appoint. Fred Williams the third for the replacement of Craig Sidlinger on the Civil Service Commission.
There's a second item under authorizations and bids.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. Number two is a request to word the low bid for the renovation of Civic Center's second floor bathrooms. To the Peterson Companies in the amount of sixty nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars budget line item one oh one, nine seven zero 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 zero, nine seven five. One oh six. Motion Wilson.
Support Gerald Row.
Support Gerald Row, Mr. Huffmeister.
That's good evening again. I present to you. The three bids that we did receive for the second floor restroom project, you do see those as part of the memo. The low bid was sixty nine thousand nine hundred and forty nine dollars and ninety four cents. We did receive two other bids that were a little bit higher. We did run this contractor past the building department for any background information that they may have, they have not done any work directly with them. And I have sent drafted copies of the agreement and all bidders qualifications, insurance, et cetera, over to attorney winners for review. I will add that in my memo, I did state that this could be contingent upon a final attorney review in case he's not had time to review it.
Mr. Winters?
Yes, I'm still reviewing it, as you know, there is a, as Mike indicated, there's a three bids and they're pretty. Kind of, this is a little bit, but this, this. I am reviewing the contract and there is going to be some additional requirements and regards to the insurance, et cetera. So I'll give that, I'll give my final vetting and if you prove it a contingent by attorney review, then I'll follow up in every regard.
Questions or comments from board members? So can this be a friendly amendment contingent upon attorney review? That would.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson and Gerald Row.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you Lisa for pointing that out. Under other business, we'd like to add the Civil Service Commission appointment. Fred Williams the third, whose term will expire eleven twenty, twenty twenty four.
So moved Eldridge.
Motion Eldridge.
Support Gerald Row.
Support Gerald Row. Is there questions or comments?
Just a comment if I could. I didn't know this was on the agenda until earlier today. I worked side by side many years with Fred when he was at the fire department, I was at the P D. And you couldn't have selected a more honorable person. He, I can't say enough good things about Fred Williams.
Excellent, good to know and like you said, he served in the city and retired from the city of Ypsilanti, so there's a lot of. Good information that can be shared amongst the members and we are so sorry for the passing of Mr. Sidlinger. He was a great member and. I don't understand how they can find a cure, how can they send people to the move, can't find a cure for cancer? So we thank him for his service and thank you Stan for acknowledging Mr. Williams. This was recommended by the fire chief as well. And they have a lot of work to do, so we need another board member. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much for that consideration on adding it to the agenda. Now we have board member updates if there are any.
Madam Chair.
Yes, trustee Eldridge.
I'm just, I wanted to echo just earlier what Doug had mentioned about the people that have come before us. Now, I mean, I'm very fortunate to sit in an office where there's only been two predecessors that I can recall. And so those are extremely large shoes to fill, but when I got appointed to this board back in two thousand and four. T R Stumbo is one of the first people to step forward and help me. And I'm just indebted to all that he did for me through the years. As well as many of the other board members that have come before me, including Bill Winters. So, you know, I sit here tonight because of those, those people.
Thank you Stan. Any other board member comments or? Yes, trustee Swanson, little hand raiser you.
Anyway, I just wanted to say thank you to the staff at the township. I really appreciate the information that we've been provided. Recently tech helping get things set up so that we can do things and we can have equipment to do Zoom. But there hasn't been anybody that I've interfaced with that hasn't been completely. Helpful in making sure that I can, like we can serve this role. And just, so I really want to say thank you to tech, just everybody down the line, every time we're getting information, I appreciate all the information and. Attorney Winters giving us background information and I appreciate that the proposals that have been presented, the things that come in the back. You can see that people are really doing a lot of work to make sure that not only trustees. The public can get in and look at packets and see what's being done, so I just want to say thank you to everyone for the hard work that they do. Under really difficult circumstances with COVID, it's appreciated by the community and it's appreciated by the board, thank you.
Thank you Debbie, very much. Any other comments?
I just echo what Debbie said, what trustee Swanson said, yeah. Very appreciative of all of the help that we've been given.
Good, great, that's what it's about. I did want to tell people that. The new West Willow Neighborhood Association has applied for a grant with Habitat for Humanity and Family Life Center. And the proposal for Michigan Health Endowment Fund, Community Health Impact Initiative. And the grant is proposing a Create Relationships and Resource Program because. Like Joanna McCollum stated earlier, there's so many resources, but we cannot connect there, I mean. Clerk Row and I couldn't figure out how to do it either, just how, all these monies are available, but we can't get them into the hands of the residents who need them. So part of this program, this grant request is to have a relationship and resource program. To connect older adults aged sixty plus who live in the West Will and Sugarbrook. With companions who will develop communication with our seniors, form relationships and stuff and. It really is a grant that I just have to write a letter of support for on behalf of the township and. And there's no financial commitment other than engaging. And there's no financial commitment other than engaging with information with our residents. So I wanted to share that with the board. That's a real positive thing that's happened this year. And I also want to thank, you know, the current board members and the past board members and all the employees who reached out to me and provided support through this tough time. I appreciate it, and I just want to say that. Motion to adjourn would be in order?
Removed.
Motion Wilson, support Eldridge, is that correct?
Yep.
To adjourn at approximately 8:16 PM. Thank you all, see you in two weeks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
See everybody later.